Five thirty. Let's call to order tonight's regular Board of Education meeting for Wednesday, March fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three here in the boardroom. Do we have a roll call, please, Sammy?
Paul Pro.
Here.
Jack Reeger.
Here.
Ron Liberty. Kendra Austin.
Here.
Jacqueline Remler.
Here.
Maria Volpe. Brett Waller. Linda Yingling. Kevin Lynn.
Here. Good evening and welcome to the Merrill Area Public Schools Board of Education meeting. MAPS respects the role that our elected board members serve and the function of our board meetings. Board members and administrators are committed to working collaboratively to provide our students a safe learning environment and the highest level of achievement. This meeting is a formal event and professional conduct is the expectation for all in attendance. Thank you.
Do the pledge? Yes, let's do the pledge. We can all rise as we're able, face the flag.
Stand, don't you.
I pledge.
We do this to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we any slip, still hold the comment this evening? All right. We will move on. Next order of business will be recognition. Tonight, the board would like to recognize Ryder Depes for a second-place finish at state wrestling and also recognize the high school coaching team of Coach Brian Suhaki, Kerry Mullenberg, Isaac Quentrick, Tanner Depes, and Ben Natski. Just some highlights from the season from Coach Suhaki talking about Ryder. Forty-six-and-two record, one hundred and three actually career wins, thirty-one pins this season, two-time state qualifier, two-time conference champion, first place at Mount Horeb, the Blue Jay Challenge, Wisconsin Valley Conference Regional and Sectional, second place at state, and the Merrill Wrestling Awards for most team points, most takedowns, most pins, most dedicated, most valuable, and the Legion Award, all that by most impressively being a four-point-oh student. So, congratulations. Coaches, you want to get in the photo as well? Ben, Ryan?
Send yourself here.
Absolutely. I've already warned Ryder that we're going to put him on the spot, so Brian, don't go far. I may do the same for you. You want to say a little something about Ryder first, and then I'll let him go after that?
Yeah, you know, so I wasn't prepared to say anything, but it's really easy to talk about Ryder because, you know, not just all those things, but in the four-point-oh, but the character that he displays. He's willing to help his teammates, he's encouraging them. He's just, the character is the best part about Ryder, and he's looking forward to go into Eau Claire Dells and he'll still be, or Eau Claire Dells. Eau Claire. I give him a hard time because I was a pointer, so blue golds, I'm sorry. And anyways, he's going there and he'll represent Merrill still while there, being a blue gold, and it'll be awesome. But there's, you know, so many great things to say about Ryder, but, you know, just, I always kind of talk to him about is, this is a moment in time, too. This is, you know, this isn't, you know, one match doesn't define you, one event doesn't define you, it's going to be your whole career, whole whatever that you do with yourself, so.
Absolutely. Thanks, Coach. And Ryder, give us a couple highlights or try to summarize your season and everything going on as a Blue Jay wrestler.
Well, it started off, I took a loss to a state runner-up, returning state runner-up, and then I think I won forty-two matches straight after that. And I think my favorite moment of the season was probably after the state semifinals. Got on the bus and everyone was cheering Ryder over again. Then I lost in the state finals, and my only two losses this year are two state capings.
Absolutely. Congratulations on everything and best of luck as you go forward and become a blue gold and finish up your Merrill career here.
Thank you.
At this time on the agenda, I'm going to turn it over to our student Board of Education representatives, Brooke Rudeye and Isaiah Rell. Whichever one would like to go first, we'll turn the floor over to you two.
I guess I'll go first. Spring sports are starting to practice. Practices have begun for baseball, track, and other sports as well. The teams are beginning to prepare for what are sure to be successful seasons. Students from Merrill High School will be leaving for the Greece and Italy trip this Friday. Students will be sightseeing, learning, and making memories in Europe over spring break. The trip participants are excited for the opportunity to branch out and learn in a whole new way. Merrill High School will be holding a career fair on April sixth. Sixty businesses will be participating, and there will be many interactive stations and hands-on demonstrations in the fields of tech ed, agriculture, health, business, and food. This will be a great opportunity for students to learn more about the job opportunities and potential careers.
And then with what Isaiah said, we wrapped up our ACT last week, Tuesday, for our junior class, and while the juniors were testing, the rest of our students got to enjoy school from home as they were able to have a virtual day. This was our school's first year taking the ACT on computers rather than paper. And with that, we are excited to see the difference this makes in our school's overall composite score. Seeing as we wrapped up the ACT, our sophomores and freshmen are preparing to take their pre-ACT in spring, April seventeenth. And then coming up in a few weekends, our students will have the opportunity to attend prom. This year, prom will be held on Saturday, April first. The grand march will start at six P.M. with the dancing from ten-thirty to, or six-thirty to ten. This will be a very exciting night for our students as the theme will be neon. As years pass, the grand march will be livestreamed on Merrill Area Public Schools YouTube page, so feel free to tune in.
All right. Thank you, Brooke and Isaiah. Any board members have any questions? Paul, go ahead.
There's a question from Mr. Hurry. Story going around about some of the students taking their ACT couldn't finish. There was a computer glitch or something?
Yeah, just happened to shake.
We ended up having six students that were kicked out of the program, out of the ACT program itself. ACT, the company, the program's called Pearson Access, and I was having email permission. So, we were initially told that they were going to have to re-take the ACT. They got kicked out like seconds. Through working with DPI and one of the staff there, they were able to finish up this Tuesday, six students, and they got to keep their progress. So, that was overall, six students didn't carry, but it was on ACT that did not.
That's good. Thank you. Thanks, Paul. Any other board members with questions for our board reps, Isaiah or Brooke? Otherwise, next on our agenda, thank you, guys. Next on our agenda is the Board of Education Learning Opportunity, and I'll leave that introduction to Shannon.
Thank you. Yeah, Dale Bergman's here to talk to us about transportation routing and share some information about how busing is done in this district.
I've just got a short, I don't know, ninety-minute presentation.
Do you have popcorn, then?
And next on our agenda.
So, with the upcoming school year, we've had a few questions about what's going to happen with our routing and stuff like that. Some of the consolidations we've had to do for budgets, and we look at, we look at these all the time anyway. This is example of one of our routes that we have right now in our district. If you look at the brutality of our district. This comprises MAPS' whole district. And a very tiny light blue spot in there is where the city limits are within the district. So, if we add the students into that, it just kind of shows where the demographics of where our students live throughout our district. And you can see that our northwest area and our southwest area are less densely populated than our eastern side, and our city obviously is tremendously populated. So, I look at areas where we can possibly cut down or make things more efficient, and I target this area over here in the southwest where we have less students and families that would be impacted by consolidation. Some of these options should clear up a little bit. That really affects four different bus roads, which is, I'm just showing the PM routes right now, it would be number eight, number one, number three, and number twenty-five. And if I put those all together on one page. Kind of shows how they react with each other. You see, there's made some possibilities to grab some outliers over here off of this route, some over here off of that route. So, as I look at areas where we can maybe thin out a route, I start looking at the tops of these, I say, this route's already at over thirty-nine minutes long. Now, I take a little bit into the fact that it starts at Pine River, picks up some of our Head Start students, brings them to the high school for the transfers. So, even if I took that half hour off of there, it's still an hour, ninety minutes long. Look at Route Three, an hour, four minutes long. Look at Route One, an hour twenty-seven. So, that one, I maybe not want to throw too many more kids on, just to try to keep that ride a little bit shorter. Our current standard in the district is to try and keep it under ninety minutes for kids, no longer than, you know, one minute or an hour. Though, obviously, if we add some kids to a route, that could impact it. So, as I look into different ways we could do that, I'm just going to flip into a different section of the district right now. And I look up, I just, I deleted a route up in the recent areas for purposes of example in this presentation. You see, I've got these kids out here that are hanging around, doing their bus stop. That's what it indicates by these little yellow circles and little red circles that has a couple of kids in there. So, if I want to add them to a route and see how that impacts, I just circle the kids up there. In those time up there, it's fifty-two minutes. And our software will route them the best way it thinks it wants to, and we still have to adapt it. But now, I increased that route by about twenty-five minutes. Now, we still, from this point, have to talk with the vendors and say, can that bus really travel down that road where software wants to think, wants to go, to make sure that's possible, the passive bus down those roads because the software doesn't know that, the condition of the roads and our conditions and stuff like that. But this is where we start with that process. We talk to the, talk to vendors and say, can we do this? Can we do that? Maybe we'll want to tweak one off the bottom and add to another route, just to kind of level it off a little bit. So, the process of checking these data, mining it out, isn't terrible. It just takes a little bit of what-ifs. We specifically target some of those areas where we impact families the least. I think it's important that we try to keep our families on our side with these things and try to keep the burden at its minimum. So, that's really what I got for you, just to kind of explain all the processes.
This is probably off the wall, but if you can go back, the city bus used to transport kids into the city. There weren't any school buses. I could be wrong in this, but I don't remember school buses in the city. Remember the city bus picking up, they ran a special bus morning and night for the school kids. Did that end for any particular reasons, anybody wrong?
We do have some areas in the city that are considered hazardous locations because of train tracks, truck traffic, or stuff like that. So, those are included with our in-town routing. Some of those in-town students are within or outside of our match designation to their schools, so we have to transport those with the yellow bus anyway. We bring them to various bus stops within the city. We have about thirty-five bus stops within the city, and we, this last year, we put signage up within the city to indicate where those are, which routes they service, which schools they service, so families can get a better idea where kids have to go to catch the bus. Now, we still have kids that, when their bus goes, they're just going to the high school they hop on when they're not supposed to, which I guess, if a kid wants to get to school, it's really hard. We try to reach, my biggest problem there is if there was an accident with the bus, I really should know who's on that bus and who's not. But the kids have been pretty good with it, the bus drivers have been pretty good with it. We do a tremendous amount of transfers, as you know, because we've only got four ways across the river in town, and two out of town, two in town, so we got to make sure that we get the kids from this side of town to that side safely, et cetera, and back the other way. So, we do a tremendous amount of transferring, which is why we have those hubs at Jefferson, the middle school, and over here at the high school, to make sure we get the kids where they need to go.
Okay, just curious about it. Thank you.
We're pretty okay with Merrill Brown quite a bit, just to make sure we don't overlap their areas. And there's some instances where they actually service some of our students, which we pay them to, because it might be, and it's mostly four K's, kids that we can't, we don't have time to get them through the city and back home before the road has to take off or PM route or situations like that. If you look here, we've got this with two deleted, we've got seventy-one runs that the buses make every day. And that's with all that, that's with after-school programs, that's with some of our pro-fee runs that we run for days when pro-fee has school and we don't. So, there's seventy-one runs that these things are running each day, so it's a tremendous amount of coordination that takes place to make sure every kid is as safe.
Thanks, sir.
With them seventy-one runs, how many buses is that?
We have, we searched twenty-three regular buses and six special ed buses. Some of the buses, like this bad buses in the morning, they'll come and do their good kids, and then they'll go pick up some four Kers and take them to their group program. And then they might pick up an early release child that has an IEP for early release and take them home, and pick up one that has a late start and bring them back. So, there's our, one bus might do several things in this, these runs, just to try to make, maximize what we have with the long drivers we have, and so far, given luck, we haven't had a special ed go down yet.
Any additional questions from board members? Anything to add, Shannon?
No. I think that was.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dale. Next on our agenda will be, there is administrative reports. Board members are always encouraged, if they have questions, to clarify in advance. You certainly can ask on the record now or to discuss things if you've just thought of it now. I'll turn over the administrative reports to Shannon.
Thank you. First on the dock is the Director of Curriculum and Structure Report, focusing mostly on human growth and development updates, and Linda is here this evening if you have any questions. Then we have the Pine River School for Young Learners Report. Mr. Timmich is here. He does have some things on the agenda a little bit later on in the meeting tonight, but this one is there for the information side of things. Food service update is next because I'm going to find Laura Crowsey. She is not here. See, she has a participation report and her board's information for the month. Next up is the Director of Special Education and Pupil Services Report. Karen Baker is here this evening to answer any questions. Her topic covers the achievement gap and opposing the achievement gap or addressing the achievement gap and co-teaching and co-finding. Director of Business Services Report is next. Some information there about insurance rentals, joint finance committee, and some of those kind of things. And Kelly is here this evening as well to answer any questions. Dale Bergman presented, or shared his Director of Buildings and Rooms update, building consolidation updates, some of the newest projects, safety and security.
They moving along on the, on the facility study, pretty?
Yeah, so we meet with them again tomorrow night at five, and so they're kind of at the process where they assess the buildings and they're kind of putting like condition ratings on what we've got, and so we're starting to talk about the wealth of options, I think that, everything from like, well, anything, any scenario you could take up pretty much. I think maybe we left that, we have about a dozen, something, ten-ish. And so, we're going to kind of have that discussion refined, and we do have that workshop with the board at the end of the month. And so, all the options are going to be a little tighter to find by then. We'll be sharing some of my certain ideas and how to proceed, but yeah, I think it's progressing quite nicely.
Very good communication with, it came from minor rentals, did your cost and contact with, did the case official, very decent progress.
And then for the superintendent's report, I had some information about the facilities update as well. I also shared some information about summer school. Dr. Strike shared some, some information about summer school costing and some of the revenue challenges that we had through summer school. We are running summer school this year just because of the time that that information came to us. We decided we could still run summer school and not create a hardship for families, but we will look at that going into next year and really break down the cost back to the back. The one big tweak that this year is they'll be doing in summer school is that we will not be providing transportation, which last year was single-digit students.
We had eighteen Head Start students transferred and I think fourteen from the hubs. So, it was less than fifteen, all the other period.
So, and we'll communicate, we can communicate now, but we will still continue.
We will still transfer swimming kids from Cape Livers to the middle school, the field show, so if that time to get back to the area.
I was surprised in talking to Dr. Strike when she was talking to some of the, there are a lot of schools that no longer do summer schooling at all. Any questions on that report? That, I'll turn it back to you.
All right. Thank you, Shannon. Next on our agenda is the committee reports. We'll start with the Facilities Committee attached with the draft minutes from the March first committee meeting. Myself as chair is available for any questions. Do we have any questions for the Facilities Committee? Any questions for Facilities? We'll move on to Finance Human Resources Committee. The draft minutes were provided to the board for the March eighth committee meeting. Members of the committee are available for questions. Any questions for the Finance Human Resources Committee members?
I know one.
Go ahead, Chad.
On the comprehensive plan adjustment, I see the administration asked for one percent. I see they motioned to do a two percent increase. What was, I didn't realize, I just saw this, didn't realize it was, you guys were asking for one, we gave two, or the committee gave two, I was just wondering.
Go ahead. So, my recollection of that conversation was that, because previously, we had decided that anybody who's not classified got two point seven. And so, it was kind of like, we'd agreed on two point seven for anybody that wasn't classified. Our recommendation was one, it was kind of a general, is how I would describe that conversation. Would you agree with that, Kelly?
I think two, I think there was two percent.
I would say there are, yeah. No, that's okay. And it's a topic that you're going to discuss and go on later, too. But we looked line by line, if you recall initially, it's like one percent, one percent, three, three and a half, two, like if you go down each step, it gradually went down. The last step, if I recall, was two and a half percent, and the idea was it was dropping, but didn't drop as drastically to the one percent. Also knowing that this is not a, we're going to need to revisit this because we now have, the plan has been in place for so long, that nineteen steps, we have people that have only been here five years that are hitting that, you know what I mean? Not everyone starts at step one. There's a lot of people that come in with experience that might do ten or twelve, and then they're now, you know, they've only moved six times. So, we're really going to have to come back to that. So, I think if I recall, too, that it was kind of that gradual of going up and going down, two is a little more of that gradual piece, also knowing that we are going to have to revisit this at steps, knowing that people don't start at one. They might start at fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, and so just say that they're going to have a one percent, you know, three years, and then that's it. It's a parallel.
Right.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chad. Anything else you wanted to add on that, Kendra? I think that summarized it right. And that was brought up by discussion on board committee members, as you said, in the topic summary, was administrative recommendation for, to start the discussion at one-point-oh. So, any other questions for the Finance Human Resources Committee? Hearing no additional questions, we'll move to CTP or Curriculum, Technology, Pupil Services. We can have the attached draft minutes from March eighth. Numbers of that committee are present for any questions. Is there any questions for our CTP committee? Any questions for CTP? Hearing none, we'll move on. Next on the agenda is unfinished business. We do not have anything classified as that, so we'll move to Board of Education business. And our first item under Board of Education business this evening is approval of the Head Start Federal Grant with an attached topic summary sheet authored by Dr. Kelly Strike and Ryan Martinovich with the recommended motion. Do we have a motion this evening? Paul?
Move to approve the two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four federal grant Head Start, Head Start grant, I'm sorry.
I'll second.
Motion by Paul, we have a second by Chad. Do we have any discussion or question on that motion or this topic? Any discussion or questions on the motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously on a voice vote. Next item on our agenda is the Head Start Cost Allocation Plan for two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four. That topic summary sheet was also provided by Dr. Strike and Ryan Martinovich. We do have a recommended motion, if anyone is willing to make a motion. Paul?
Move to, hold on a second. Move to approve the Head Start Cost Allocation Plan for two thousand and twenty-three and two thousand and twenty-four.
Motion by Paul, do we have a second? Second by Kendra. Any questions or discussion on that motion or this topic? Any questions or discussion on the motion or this topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously on a voice vote. Next item on our agenda is the approval of the Head Start Training and Technical Assistance Plan for two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four. Attached was a topic summary sheet provided by Ryan Martinovich with the recommended motion. Do we have a motion this evening? Chad?
Motion to approve the Head Start two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four T slash TA plan.
Motion by Chad, do we have a second? Second by Jacqueline. Any discussion or questions on that motion or this topic? Any discussion or questions on the motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously on a voice vote. Next item on our agenda this evening is the purchase of a camera server. A topic summary sheet was provided by Dale Bergman with the recommended motion from our Facilities Committee. Do we have a motion this evening?
That's why I lost it. Move to approve the purchase of an additional camera server.
Motion by Paul, do we have a second?
A second.
Second by Chad. Do we have any discussion on this topic or the motion?
What is this camera server for? I'm sorry.
That is for retention of any of the videos that are being taken.
Security.
Security, yeah. So, looking to retain things for up to the twenty-eight, thirty days. So, they're working with the tech team and Andrew to making sure that we have that, so we keep it long enough retained. Any additional questions or discussions? Any additional questions or discussion on the motion or topic, Kendra?
Um, I know that's coming from Fund Forty-Six, so that doesn't have any, like, when we talk about referendum and spending money, that is separate. Okay, just wanna make sure.
Yes, there was, uh, with the planning for Fund Forty-Six, there was some documentation in there for uses for technology specific to this, so yes, good clarifying point. Any other discussion or questions on the motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next on our agenda is trail grooming equipment donations from the Friends of the Evue Merrill School Forest. Attached was a topic summary sheet from Dale Bergman. And we have a recommended motion from our facilities committee. Do we have a motion this evening? Chad?
Motion to approve of the donations of an eight-foot tid tech roller, snow roller valued at two thousand five hundred twenty-nine dollars and a six-foot tid tech snow groomer tracks setter valued at ten thousand nine hundred sixty-two from the Friend, Friends of the, I can't say that.
Evue?
Evue Merrill School Forest.
We have a motion by Chad, do we have a second? Second by Kendra. Do we have any discussion on that motion or this topic this evening? Any discussion or questions on the motion or the topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next on our agenda is the WIAA Boys Hockey Cooperative and WIAA Girls Hockey Cooperative approval. Attaches the renewal agreement, which was approved last year when we did have the motion as a group. Uh, in the motion, it only stated for one year, even though it was a two-year agreement. So we are getting ready to start year two for next school year. We wanted to clarify that going forward. There is a recommended motion from our CTP committee. Anyone willing to make a motion on this topic? Kendra?
I recommend a, um, motion to approve the WIAA Boys Hockey Cooperative Team renewal for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four as well as the WIAA Girls Hockey Cooperative Team renewal for twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four.
Motion by Kendra, do we have a second?
A second.
Second by Chad. Any discussion or questions on this topic or motion?
How many players are from Maryland that you know of here?
Yeah, in the boys side, it's probably about a dozen.
Does that number look like it's gonna go up with everything?
Uh, it'd probably stay there.
Stay there, okay.
We'll have a bridge to cross if they consolidate East High School somewhere.
And the other, the other question was, I know we have had, um, a couple females play on the Storm team. How is that projecting out? That seemed to be on more of an downward trend.
Yeah, so currently we're expecting none for next year, but the co-op agreements, it's a two-year deal with the WIAA, so you don't want to jump in and all of them, so we just let it, we just don't have a fair. Or we do have a, I'll show up that one's for hockey next year.
Any other question or discussion on this motion or topic?
That girls hockey, that's a bigger cooperative, right? That's quite fuel. Sorry.
Nope, good point. Any other discussion or questions on this topic or motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is one-to-one student device refresh grades three through twelve with a topic summary sheet provided by Andrew Kaler. A recommended motion from our CTP committee. Anyone willing to make a motion this evening? Kendra?
I recommend a motion to approve the purchase of Chromebooks in the amount of one million eighty-two thousand nine hundred forty-seven dollars and fifty cents to be purchased with ESSER funds for grades three through twelve.
Motion by Kendra, we have a second. Second by Paul. Any discussion or questions?
What's the fifty cents for?
Part of, part of the tax or shipping.
Is there a reason we're going to Chromebooks? Cause I see like, I'm just gonna jump down, like, but the younger grades are going iPads and.
Yep, I'll let you just get there. We put together a nice, nice table of people to kind of break this down and get, and put them a lot of groups.
So yeah, so yeah, we, uh, we made up a committee of administrators, teachers, um, tech staff, librarians, and, uh, we went through embedded to see if iPads were still viable, um, for all grades. Uh, committee came to decision that Chromebooks with their attached keyboards and track pads would be better suited for grades three through twelve, um, to accommodate for, um, those grades with our curriculum and other online, um, services that we use technology for.
Does that?
Another tid bit, we also surveyed students at all grade levels to fans fact, so everybody that.
So you gotta change up your programming? That you're going Chromebooks and iPads, or that doesn't matter?
It, um, it, it'll be a different management system, but, um, we already use it for our Google, uh, um, email accounts and stuff. So it's, it's pretty similar, there's not much change to it.
And Andrew, while you're there, you want to just explain why we say K two iPads?
Oh, yes, uh, so K two, um, the committee decided that, um, with the lower grades, having a tablet interface was still the better option, um, and it still functions well with our curriculum and other, um, tech software as well.
Paul, you have a question?
Uh, you said attached keyboard app, is that what we're looking at here?
Yeah, it'll be similar to a laptop, it's just a little bit smaller form factor.
Okay, thank you.
The other point that was discussed that, um, at committee is just as a reminder, the reason we're not changing philosophy on leasing versus buying, but with ESSER one-time funds in our budget, it needed to be spent out of ESSER funds, so there was no way to lease those and use that money over that time. So this is a purchase agreement, so just keeping that in mind. Any additional questions on this motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed, say nay. Do we have any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is the one-to-one student iPad device refresh for grades K through two. As already led into by the topic summary, an update from Andrew Kaler. And we have a CTP committee recommended motion, do we have a motion? Paul?
Motion to approve the purchase of iPads in the amount of two hundred twenty-four thousand three hundred seventy-two dollars and fifty cents to be purchased with ESSER funds for grades K two.
Motion by Paul, do we have a second? Second by Kendra. Any discussion or questions on this motion or topic? Any discussion on this motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next on our agenda is the CISA nine shared services agreements for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. The attached topic summary sheet was provided by Shannon Murray. The recommended motion from our finance human resources committee. Do we have a motion this evening? Kendra?
Recommend a motion to approve of the CISA nine twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four shared services contract as presented with projected cost of two hundred fifty-two thousand nine hundred forty-three dollars.
Motion by Kendra, do we have a second? Second by Chad. Any discussion on topic or motion or questions for that same topic or motion? Clarifying point that I believe in the topic summary sheet that that number is down about fifty thousand dollars from this school year, so we are looking into any way that we can keep those things in-house. Those are usually, as you can see on that, uh, approval or service contract form, that, uh, things that either we cannot hire or find applicants for and things that at a CISA level that perhaps we don't need something full-time that we can share with multiple districts and then have a cost savings for everybody. Any questions on the motion or the topic at this time? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is the approval of a grant donation from an anonymous donor through the Community Foundation of North Central Wisconsin for Mental Health Navigation Services. Attached to the donation letter are received by Community Foundation. A recommended motion from our finance human resources committee. Do we have a motion this evening? Kendra? Kendra?
Recommend a motion for the approval of a grant donation from the anonymous donors from the Community Foundation of North Central Wisconsin for Mental Health Navigation Services at MAPS.
Motion by Kendra, do we have a second?
Yes.
Second by Paul. Any discussion or questions on the topic? I'm gonna kind of clarify quick, Shannon, kind of the timing, cause we have talked about this before and.
Both, both J and K were brought to the board as a concept in December. And so now we do have policy about accepting large donations. We do have policy about, uh, contracts, which is J and K independently sort of doing this. I mean, the policy and the, um, the person.
Fair enough, any questions on the motion or topic by any board members? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is the approval of agreement with the Lincoln County UW Extension Office for the Mental Health Navigation Services. Topic summary sheet was provided by Shannon Murray and just, uh, shared the discussion on that. And a recommended motion from the Finance Human Resources Committee. Do we have a motion this evening? Chad?
Motion to approve of the agreement with Lincoln County UW Extension Office for Mental Health Navigation Services for one year as presented.
Motion by Chad, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Paul. Any discussion or questions on that motion or this topic this evening? Any question or discussion on the motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is the compensation plan adjustment. Had a topic summary sheet from Dr. Kelly Strike and a recommended motion from our Finance Human Resources Committee. Do we have a motion this evening? Paul?
Move the approval of compensation plan adjustments for a two percent increase for any staff that exceed the last step of the plan. Adjust contract age to two hundred and ten for all elementary and middle school principals and associate principals and removal of professional advancement language for support staff.
Motion by Paul, do we have a second? Second by Jacqueline. Any discussion or questions on that motion or topic? Go ahead, Chad.
Just, I mean, I did talk about it last meeting before, I just, with being a failed referendum here. I know, I'm not saying that nobody doesn't deserve it, I just think it's the wrong time to be doing this. I get that we're running out of steps, but with, I mean, part of our referendum was to keep and retain staff and we've got a failed referendum and we're still giving increases. I just, to me, it's just the wrong time to be doing it.
Any additional discussion or, go ahead, Jacqueline?
I guess I disagree, just given that, um, we're asking the people who are here to do more than less, right? So if I felt like there was ever a time for a raise, this may be it. Even though we are in a failed referendum, I think our cuts need to come from other places in order to keep and retain those staff that are choosing to stay here through this tough, rough patch.
I agree. I agree with Jacqueline.
That's just, I just feel like it's just not the case.
Kendra, Joe, do you think that?
I think when we, just when we looked at it, it was very, it's like eight hundred dollars if it was one percent. Or like, it was very minimal, if I'm correct, and when we looked at what that was. And I agree with Jacqueline, I think that we have, our staff deserves something, you know, to keep with retention.
Right, I think that is, uh, is definitely a, a challenging line based on, so what are we hearing by a failed referendum? And we have had community conversations talking about, to your point, the retention of, of quality staff, which, um, to be here or to be in that part of the compensation chart is, is certainly, uh, something we should be, uh, supporting and rewarding those staff members for instead of freezing the people at the very top of that chart. And to that point, we do need to do some things to, to look at that, that, you know, we got to that point when the chart was designed. I don't think, um, it was considered how fast we would get there. And, and we didn't, so, Paul, you had your hand.
Just, uh, just a comment, a number of people that I talked to about the referendum, wages was not a consideration in the referendum. It was building and grounds, totally that they, they didn't like, and I, I don't know what they expected us to do, but wages were never a real big issue with the people I talked to.
Yeah, I would go specifically, you know, not a specific, not the buildings and grounds department, but.
No, not.
Like, like some misunderstandings of, of the use of perhaps Jefferson. Why did we consolidate and leave it open? But yes, I think there was, there was some things in, uh, while, while the word did get out and we tried to tell the story and that was thanks to, to Shannon and many other staff members. There was still some people that either didn't hear, understand, or approve of that use at the time, so.
I wasn't meaning the, the.
Right.
The group itself, I meant the, the topic.
Nope, just wanted to clarify, thanks, Paul. Any other discussion on this topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Any abstentions? So, if I'm doing the math, we have three, one, one, motion carries, a simple majority. Next on our agenda is Neil, uh, volume thirty-two, number one, technical corrections per our bylaw zero one three one point three. The superintendent is authorized to review and make technical corrections. At this point in our agenda, we're doing that, um, as we go through and review those. Uh, we're trying to be consistent in some wording. A lot of times we do find out that we still have the full words, the Board of Education as an example, and we change that to the board. Things of that nature for consistency, so at this point, that is just, um, making everyone aware of those technical corrections. Next item on our agenda is the personnel report, hirings, recruitments, resignations, retirements. The attached personnel report was updated as recently as today, uh, from Dr. Kelly Strike, Director of Business Services. Do we have a motion this evening? Paul?
I move to approve the attached personnel report contingent upon the satisfaction of the appropriate liquidated damages for resignations if applicable.
We have a motion by Paul, do we have a second? Second by Kendra, do we have any discussion or questions on the motion or this topic?
Can I just make a clarification?
Certainly.
Can I just discover this?
Absolutely.
Um, the Scott Herson, when, he's residing in the Position of Activities Director, says by a teacher under.
That would go along with it.
Actually, I wonder what it would be.
No, that's the hiring part.
Oh, that's the hiring part?
Yeah, I was gonna say that's the...
Is it, is it down the road? Oh, yeah, okay, I stand corrected.
Is there any sense on that? Okay.
Any additional discussion or questions on this topic or this motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is in fact the consent agenda. I would ask at this time if any board members would like anything pulled to handle independently from our consent agenda? If not, I would be looking for a motion.
Just a clarification.
Yeah, go ahead.
Go ahead, Jacqueline.
Under B, under the consent agenda, claims and vouchers, it just says Waller and Cromer. I don't know if that was just like a typo error.
No, that's supposed to be that way.
That's, that is who reviews it this month, right? It's always the board treasurer.
Oh, is it an assignment? Okay.
I didn't, I've never saw it. It's always Waller because he's the treasurer, so where you at, when the treasurer would, um, get together every month with a rotating board member to review the...
That didn't happen. I, I'm, and I've never saw, like, you don't even, I've never noticed that before, so I'm like, what is this?
Yeah, and so every month, there's a different board member with Waller that, so that board member wants to pay special attention to the, but I was, I've never told you that.
No, I haven't.
So that's got, we have to make that part of our, um, onboarding. Tell you about that.
And is that normally sent as an email link, or do you mail that packet to the board numbers?
I don't think so.
Anything?
The agenda notes goes to everybody, but when we do set our schedule in April at the organizational meeting, it says there's a column, who reviews the vouchers with the treasurer, and we have a rotating schedule, but that really needs to be mentioned in the...
Right, 'cause I've seen it, that, like, never, nobody ever got ahold of me to go through it or...
Right.
I know what it is, so I guess I just assume you do, so I wouldn't, we'll have to tweak our onboarding process so that that's clear, what that means for...
Good catch, good question. I mean, I have reviewed it, Shannon, I believe you've reviewed that as well. Not hearing anything individually being asked. Hold from the consent agenda, just a clarifying question, so I would look for a motion. Paul?
Move to approve consent agenda items A through C, which includes the minutes of the February fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, and March sixth, twenty twenty-three meetings. Claims, vouchers, and receipts totaling three million twenty-eight thousand three hundred twenty-one dollars and thirteen cents, and donations totaling five thousand five hundred and seventy dollars.
Motion by Paul, do we have a second?
One second.
Second by Chad. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Kendra, you willing to abstain from the February fifteenth?
Oh, yes, I'm so sorry, yes, I am.
Oh, thank you.
Please.
All right. Motion carries as noted with the one abstention from the February fifteenth meeting minutes. Next on our agenda is items for future meetings. Purpose of this agenda item is to identify any items that, uh, we maybe have talked about as a bordering committees that, uh, were a subtopic and we're looking to expand on that either as, as a whole board. Does anyone have any items for future meetings? And you know, we still have some that we are, are working on through the facility study, any of the future of buildings such as Jefferson School and, um, continuing to work as a, a group and administration on informing the community on how, uh, the board operates and when we meet and all the different things that way. Did anyone have any other items for future meetings that they'd like to, uh, mention this evening? Hearing none. Next on the agenda is a reminder for the radio, uh, program tomorrow morning, eight fifteen AM, uh, Blue Jay seven-thirty radio station. I'll be going through tonight's agenda and talking about upcoming items, um, future, specifically future meetings. The School Forest Advisory Meeting is coming up on Monday, March twenty-third at four PM at the School Forest. There will be a special board meeting or workshop on Wednesday, March twenty-ninth at five thirty PM. Then we will have, uh, also at a special board meeting Thursday, March thirtieth, five thirty PM in the boardroom. Head Start Policy Council next meets Tuesday, April eleventh, five thirty PM at Pine River School for Young Learners. Our CTP or Curriculum Technology Pupil Services Committee next meets Wednesday, April twelfth, four thirty PM in the boardroom. Immediately following that, but no sooner than five PM was the Finance Human Resources Committee meeting here in the boardroom as well. The next regular board meeting is slated for Wednesday, April nineteenth, five thirty PM here in the boardroom. Next, we have a contemplated motion to adjourn into executive closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes under section nineteen point eight-five per N-one per NF, considering financial, medical, social, or personal histories or disciplinary data, a specific person's preliminary consideration of specific personnel problems, investigation of charges against specific persons except where per N-B applies, which if discussed in public would be likely to have a substantially adverse effect upon the reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data or involved in such problems or investigations in one eighteen point one-two-five for the purpose of considering student early college credit and start-now applications that may involve discussions of confidential student records and to discuss other matters involving student records and personal histories that if discussed in public would likely have a substantial adverse effect on the reputation of the persons discussed. Purpose of the closed session is for the consideration of possible action regarding applications for participation in early college credit and start-college-now programs and to consider and act upon parental requests for student opt-out of state assessments, including the potential for the upcoming closed session to review the specifics applicable to affected student or students if the discussion of such an open session would be likely to have an adverse effect upon the reputation of such student or students pursuant to section nineteen point eight-five per N-one per NF of Wisconsin statutes. Any such closed session shall be immediately followed by reconvening an open session for further consideration, ultimately action upon the parental request. Do we have that motion this evening? Motion by Paul, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Chad. Do we have a roll call, please, on that, Tammy?
Paul Pearl?
Aye.
Jack Creager?
Aye.
Kendra Osmond?
Aye.
Jacqueline Gremlin?
Aye.
Kevin Beck?
Aye. This time we will secure the room for our closed session.
Yeah.
And we will...